This is Marlene Sokol, Education Reporter for the Tampa Bay Times. I want to thank and welcome the viewers tuning into the Tampa Bay Chambers 2020 Virtual Candidate Forum Series. The Tampa Bay Chamber focuses on policy, not politics. And while they do not endorse this forum, serves as a means to make sure its members and the business community are informed on where candidates stand on issues that are important to business. Today, we're excited to have candidates for Hillsborough County School Board District 7. I'd like to welcome Angela Schrodin, Dr. Jeffrey Johnson, Lynn Gray, and Sally Harris. Thank you for joining us. We are just six weeks from Election Day, so I will start with School Board Member Gray and go alphabetically. And I will ask you, can you give us a brief 60-second or less update on your campaign? And what message you want to deliver to voters in the final stretch? So, starting with Lynn.
Okay, the message would be, I was just endorsed by the AFL-CIO, the West Central Union, the CTA, Tampa Bay Realtors. And my guiding principles will be shared as we go through this meeting on equity, community involvement, and of course fiscal responsiveness.
Thank you. Sally?
Well, I have some unfinished business that I would like to see finished. And we have a lot of work to do with the school safety and mental health issues. And that would include teaching our kids coping skills. We need to see an increase in student achievement and no failing schools. And the district will have a little bit of work to do about racial disparity and racial injustice. That includes understanding the poverty that some of our children come from. Owning my own business has helped me be sensitive to the complex needs of the components that it takes to run a district as large as Hillsborough County. So, like I said, I have some unfinished business that I would like to return to the board.
Okay, thank you. Jeffrey?
Thank you. There are several things that need to take place. I think one thing to start, there needs to be freshness. There needs to be new ideas that spans our entire district and our, our school system. I want to make sure that all of our children have the fairness when it comes to their academic achievement. We have to make sure that we're tightening our academic gap. There has been several things that have happened because of COVID. There has been unfinished learning and unfinished teaching. So, we have to make sure that our children are up to par and up to standard. Also, we want to make sure that we have a diverse background. And there's an immense part of equity throughout the district that all of our students have the same resources and, and they have the same rights that all children do around the county.
Thank you. And Angela?
So, I am a lifelong educator. For 40 years, I have been intimately connected to Hillsborough County Public Schools. Graduated from Hillsborough Schools. I chose to work there. My kids are enrolled there. And so, I'm very vested in the success of this district. I've spent a lot of time working in this district. And I want to ensure for the next 13 years, just like every other family and caregiver, that we have the best schools for every child. And so, I really believe that we have to have school board members that understand as they create policies and approve budgets, that they know how each of those decisions will trickle down to the classroom, because all of them do. We have to have board members who understand deeply curriculum and pedagogy so that we make the right decisions so that all of our students can learn. And we have to ensure that we remember that it's the people, not programs in this district, that create that success.
Okay, Angela, you're a doctor too?
I am, yeah.
Okay, because I introduced Dr. Johnson and then I, not you, so I want to be fair.
Yeah, thank you.
The next question, and I'll go in reverse order for the next one. This one's going to be hard to keep to about a minute or so. But I'd like you each to tell me, what are the three most pressing issues that you see in Hillsborough School District? And what do you expect to do to address them? So, starting, and I'm just going to go with first names for the rest of the days, starting with Angela.
Absolutely, beyond a shadow of a doubt, it's COVID. And we have to remember the safety, and not just physical safety, but the mental safety, the physical safety of not only our students, but our educators as well. I've heard from countless number of educators who are just in a panic about what they're going to do when we go back. Many of them have people at home that they're caring for. We have teachers that also have students in our district. And so, it is a, it is a huge, massive problem that we really have to think about very seriously. We have to develop tailored responses for. But right next to that, right, right next to that safety is the equity that has continued, or the not equity that has continued to plague this district. We still have 300, we still have 42 schools on our 300th lowest performing. We still have schools that are on the consistently lowest performing. And we've tried to fix it for years, and we still haven't. And then finally, and if it's right alongside of it, is our budget. We are in, just on Tuesday, we figured out that we were $50 million less in our reserve budget. We have to be stewards of the money that we're given while we're trying to get more and lobby from our government. So, all of those things are neck and neck on what's important.
Okay, thank you. Jeffrey?
I think you will hear most of us perhaps say the same things when it comes to priorities.
A little bit.
So, number one. Number one, it is COVID. There are so many looming questions. There's a lack of answers in some regards. Parents are concerned. I have three sons. Schools and educators, they have many concerns and they feel as if their concerns are not being heard. So, we have to make sure that is at the forefront of everything that we're doing. Once again, we have to look at the achievement gap. We have to look at where our students are. They were not gains received because students were not tested last year. So, when they finish the last semester with e-learning, we have to figure out where they are and where they need to be. We talk a lot about equity. This is making sure that every school, every student has the fair resources that's necessary to achieve. And then we have to talk about the fiscal management. I think that's the, the big thing that's happening now, what's happened in the last 24 hours, and how there has been some mismanagement of funds and the lack of answers. So, this must be a priority. So, we have fiscal management. We understand what is the proper way of our district and what's happening fiscally. But we also have to understand what's happening structurally in our classroom to make sure our educators are safe as well as our students.
Okay, thank you. Sally?
Well, first of all is mental health and COVID coping and safety for our children. I feel like that as educators, we're going to have to jump in right ahead of the kids coming back to school and be prepared to help them cope, cope with the changes of wearing masks, cope with the changes of the space between them. There's going to be a lot of changes. So, we have to have the tools ready to go to help these students to be able to cope with all of these issues that they're going to be seeing once they come on campus. The other issue that I feel, it's been one of my strong advocates, is that we have to do a better job preparing children who graduate with a skill. So, I think we have to focus a lot on vocational education and knowing that we have something prepared for our students when they graduate. And then the final thing which did happen Tuesday night is the budget and making sure that we have a very strong oversight, a much closer look at the budget. And we have to do something. You know, you keep doing the same thing, you're going to keep the same results. So, there is policy and procedures in place with the board, but obviously they're not working. So, we need to go back to the drawing board and we need to find a new way to monitor our budgeting and, and how we spend our money.
Thank you. And Lynn? You're on mute. You have to unmute yourself.
I got it. Number one is COVID. We're dealing right now with actual back-to-school plans. And the first tier, of course, is the mandatory mask. Second, we're going to have a massive communication of social distancing among our children. Third, we're going to go ahead and have the necessary protocols in place in case a child does get sick. And fourth, we're going to also have a method of contact tracing. And hopefully at the family community centers, I would like to see the CV testing and the tracing as well. Second, we're dealing with right now a racial disparity, and that has to be addressed. So, the African-American community, myself, religious community, staff members, we're redoing the curriculum to increase African-American studies on the elementary, high school, middle school. In fact, Ken Atwater, HCC, myself, superintendent, we're working at actually the dual enrollment concept to make sure that it's elevated and respected. And third, we're looking at a tremendous fiscal, let's just say dysfunction. And it is a dysfunction. $40 million, not 50, it's 40 million. And it will be a conundrum. I am having a timeline done as to who did what and when. And last, we are having, and you all remember Dr. Jim Hamilton. He's coming down from the Florida Association of District Superintendents to do a complete independent audit. And we will find out what is going on. So, this, this will be reported, and I know Marlene will be in the front and center of this. And those are the three.
And I've been told we're at time, but you and I will follow up later on those other things, I hope. The second question, I want to start with Sally on this one. And describe, if you could, your experience with school-business partnerships? And how would you work with your colleagues and the superintendent to develop partnerships between school and business?
When you said that question, the first sentence faded out.
I'm sorry. Okay, so describe your experience with school-business partnerships. How, and which is something you well know. How would you work with the superintendent and your colleagues to create more partnerships between business and schools?
Well, I think the district is at a prime place for these partnerships. And, and the district has, I feel, been very strong in being able to develop partnerships. It's always been an asset in the community. But we are in a new place. Businesses are going out of business. There's a financial tight time right now. And where they spend their money, they're going to want to know that it's being spent correctly. So, the first thing I feel the district's going to have to do is correct the error that happened Tuesday night and have a full audit so that we do know when it happened, how it happened, and how to correct it. Because when I left, we had money in our contingency fund, and now we don't. So, I am concerned about that. As far as the partnerships and what I would do personally, I think that I would support the superintendent and, and try to get him in front of any of the business leaders that I know through the chamber. We have a fabulous Tampa Chamber downtown that is, has a large membership, and we utilize that. We get our superintendent involved in that. And we, as the board members and our little communities, we then could support him in our communities.
Thank you. Jeffrey? School-business partnerships?
Sure. A great question. I think because the superintendent is an ex-official member of the chamber, I think it starts with healthy conversation. A level of trust has to be rebuilt, because now what has happened has placed a, a spin in the mind of many business partners, can we trust the school district? So, in order for there to be collaboration, there has to be healthy conversation that takes place. Business should be at the foremodel of what we're doing in connection to our partnership. One of the things that I'm advocating for, and it's on my website, is a trifecta experience. Healthy families, healthy schools, and healthy community collab, community collaboration. With community collaboration and our business partners, this is their level of investment of pouring back into our schools that schools understand that they are not walking alone, but our business partners are walking with them. There are several partners connected to the Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce. And I think it would be great for them to extend their partnership to those schools that may perhaps be in their local district. But there has to be communication. Partners have to know that they can trust the school district with what's happening, and something that happened last night will not happen again.
Yeah.
Everyone, of course.
Thank you. Angela?
You know, I was just yesterday talking to Akash Patel of Elevate. And we were having a conversation about how is it that, what is the benefit of the school-business partnership? Because it's easy on the school side to see the benefit, right? Like, help us, right? Give us some things, give us more money. But what is the benefit on the other side? And you know, one of the things that he said that I thought was really important, and it brings back to what are we all trying to do here, is that it's a symbiotic relationship. The more we invest in our schools, the more people want to live here, the more that they spend here. And that we also are creating a pipeline of students that are ready to leave our schools, whatever they decide to do, whether it's the college route, whether it's the career into technical education route. I mean, we have, what is it, 850,000 jobs, I think, that are getting ready to be in some high, available in some high, high-needed areas. And we have the seventh largest school district in the nation. The, the opportunity right now is perfect for local businesses to come in and partner with us. And specifically, one of the things he mentioned was the CEOs in schools program and how beneficial it could be if we opened it up, because currently it's only at the elementary level. If we opened it up to the middle and high school and even possibly increased the number of days to create a true partnership, rather than just have a one day where they visited the schools.
Thank you. Lynn?
You're welcome.
Lynn, school-business partnerships, what more could we be doing in that area?
Okay, well, I mean, we, I mean, without our business partners and working with the chambers, we simply wouldn't have the richness of our schools, and there's no question. Today, I worked with Tampa General Hospital, a very big partner. We're going to develop with my Hillsborough Healthy Schools Initiative, a, and you'll like this, Marlene. It's a, it's called a wellness ecosystem. And we'll be working with the chamber, and we'll be working with the mayor and several of the partners. And in so doing, and let me expand on partnership, because a partnership with our business community will always be with us. Even when I taught in the 80s and the 90s and every century, actually been teaching 30 years, we've always had junior achievement involved. But real quick, we're right now looking at a partnership, again, with HCC, with dual enrollment, not only African-American studies, but also Hispanic studies. Also, working with Hillsborough Healthy Schools, with the Rays, Tampa Bay Rays, the Buccaneers. Working with Cargill, who, as you know, fill our food pantries, Feeding America, PNC Bank. So, miles from Moffitt. Moffitt, I'm, actually was on the board. We work with the partners to make our schools better, and we will continue to do so. I wanted to say also, right now, I'm also working on expanding apprenticeship programs. In fact, I was talking to one of the apprenticeship programs out in one of the unions, sheet metal workers. And we're looking at policy language and in terms of increasing the percentage of how many of our kids can get into those programs, how easy it is, and how we want them guided by state-regulated apprenticeship programs versus.
Thank you.
Bye.
Sorry to cut you off. I want to start with Jeffrey on this next question. Sorry when I cut you off, it's just.
It's okay. I'm used to being cut off.
But an important issue is students with disabilities. So, starting with Jeffrey, I, I want to ask you, what experience do you have with students with disabilities? And what is your philosophy as far as how the schools should meet their needs?
Very good question. I think that each child that may perhaps have an ELP and some type of learning plan when it comes to their disability, we work directly towards what helps them. I think a lot of times, we try to forcefully place things on children that may not help their academic learning gains. And so, it's very important that the school has great conversation with the family and what happens even after they leave the school. That's important to understand what's going to happen with that particular plan that families are working with to make sure that there is a continuation of that plan that is put into place is not evaporated once that child goes home. That's important. But not only that, there has to be a time extension that is not only for that child now, but there is a setup for that child to improve in any disability factors that they may have for improvement. That, that plan is not just for them now, but let's look at where they're going to be in five years or 10 years. That's very important. So, we have to make sure that we're developing a plan that is not just for them now, but also.
But a forward-looking.
We're working with their families that will be continual for them. Even with that, those disparaging parts will not hinder them when it comes to their careers and even vocational opportunities that may have, they may have in the future. So, we're working with them, and it's tailored for their exact needs.
Okay. Angela?
So, I am the proud mother of an awesome little autistic boy who is eight, who is a student in Hillsborough County Public Schools and has been since kindergarten. So, I intimately am connected to understanding the challenges of advocating for a child in a system that was not designed for him. And so, most of our schools are set up for a neurotypical child. And when you have a child that doesn't fit into a proverbial box, it is often challenging to find the resources. As everyone on this panel knows, education is historically and chronically underfunded. So, it is challenging as a mother to know what my child needs and to have to advocate for it, to be told that it's not always available. And so, we're blessed that we can go outside and we have great insurance. And I know not everybody has those privileges. So, one of the things that I am very passionate about is how do we ensure that every child, like my child, has what they need, not just to manage, but to survive? And so, the other thing that I would like to add to that is, I have on my side of being in education for over two decades, I know how to navigate an IEP meeting. Not all parents know how to do that. And so, I think it's important that we empower parents and caregivers that they know that they have the right to speak up at an IEP meeting and really to take it as far as we need to go to get what their children need.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Students with disabilities, what's your philosophy?
Sally or me?
Oh, Lynn, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, I mean, my son is a product and a successful one at that ESE. And I actually homeschooled him and had him in a program 504. It's state-mandated, and it has to be very, very critically looked at, not just frequently, but almost on a daily basis. Kim Workman, the supervisor, myself, we have made sure that inclusion policies and the follow-to-a-504 is done in every case. She is a very big responsible, responsive to any types of warning systems. In Shields Middle School, just recently, before COVID, I found that there weren't enough actual textbooks to address their needs. And plus, the portables did not have safe ramps. So, she was out, not, she made the call that day, but she was out. And we now have them fixed, at least about a month later. But anyway, I know that ESE population is not a hiccup. They are, they are an enormous resource and an enormous part of our population, as is the ELL and as is the high needs. And we have to include them with all of our best practices. And now that we have COVID, we have to make special, let's just say accommodations, to put it mildly. And I know our parents actually go to their house and make sure that their learning materials are hand-delivered. There's been a lot of the outreach and social workers included. So, at any rate, lots of work to be done. Very good question.
Thank you. Sally, students with disabilities?
Well, that's definitely up my alley. I have raised over 30 foster children, and out of that, I think 28 of them had an IEP or a 504 plan. I attended almost all of their IEP meetings and was the advocate fighting for them to have what they needed for their areas. I do know that during our budget cuts, that the district did have to cut some of the team that needed to support these students. And I hope that the new administration and new board work hard to be able to bring some of those support services back. We have to create a successful environment for them. These students need to be able to feel successful. My daughter was also adopted, and she was diagnosed autistic. And she is 22 years old, holding a job and doing quite well now. So, I do know success comes if you have the proper support system in it in their early years. So, I feel this district has done a good job, and I think that we have a lot of ground to cover. And we need to bring back some of the things that we did take away during our budget cuts.
Thank you. That was very specific. I appreciate it. Moving to the next topic, technology. And I think we, we learned a lot about technology during COVID, particularly some of the gaps and some of the shortcomings. So, at this point in time, and I'll start with Lynn Gray on this, what do you feel the district needs to do to be in a better place when it comes to learning technology?
Well, we know we're going to get involved with another whole platform, and that would be Canvas. But also, it has been recommended by myself and principals that we have one platform, not about five or six. Because if you go to Turkey Creek or Dover, these people are dealing with Microsoft, they're dealing with Google. I mean, every type of platform. And the middle school principals are going crazy because there's just so many variables to get a direct online connection. I did expand the Wi-Fi spots to extend them into Wayamama, South Shore, Ruston, and Dover, in those areas that were very weak with Wi-Fi activity. I do, I do not, as a teacher, I always want the in-front brick and mortar. I'm, I'm, you know, inclined to say that. And I am going to sacrifice with an olive branch, the blended model. If, if we do that with two days and disinfect for three days, that, that lends itself to a little bit more security in my mind for the protection. But nonetheless, we have virtual, Hillsborough Virtual, which is very structured by period, by, you know, the teacher, kids meet the teacher. Then we have more of a free online Florida Virtual. So, there are, there are variables out there for, for moms and dads to, to engage virtually. Done.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I've got to do this. Sally, what should we do as a district to get better at technology?
That is a very good question, and it's an area that I was very passionately involved in. First of all, we have some technology issues. We have programs that the district paid for that they were not using. And one of them has to do with transportation and being able to match the transportation with the roads that are being under construction, that if there, a bus breaks down or if a bus driver needs help. And all we have to do is get the, the county and the school district to be able to connect it together very easily. We all have the technology within the, the programs. Another area that we need to look at is also being able to have the technology for when a school needs help, that all of that is available. So, that is real important. One of the things that we had when COVID hit is the elementary schools had never been asked to use EdSPE. And all of a sudden, everybody was out of control on trying to communicate with our parents. So, I'm happy that they are going to do one program, Canvas, or the whole district, because we need elementary school teachers, middle school, and high school to be connected to the district. So, I think that we're in the right place. And by COVID showing us our shortcomings, that we can now move into the area that we can make this happen. Because the programs are there. We've already paid for them. We just haven't used them to the ability that we could.
Thank you. Jeffrey?
Great question. I, I think whether it's brick or mortar, brick and mortar or e-learning, I think that technology is something we understand that we cannot escape. It is the way of the world. And so, we're developing children, not just for their learning experience, but what they're going to do afterwards. Technology, I believe somehow in our finagling and understanding financing, that I think that every student in our district should have a technological tablet, that they're learning from that. Even if they're in front of their teacher, they have to learn that. COVID expressed the uncertainty of our world. And so, they need to make sure they understand that. Our older students need to be efficient in Microsoft Office products. You know, what is to upload programs, what it is to type documents. Not only that, we have to make sure that we have modules.
Sorry.
So, can I buy back some of my time? We have to also make sure that families understand the technology that is available and what's required of their children. It is very hard. I'm a, I'm a father. I have three sons in the district. Ex-B, as smart as I am, two doctorate degrees, two masters, Ex-B was an issue for me. You know, my kids like, "Dad, could you..." I'm like, "Wait a minute, what is this?" Even when I finish one of my degrees online, I'm like, "We didn't deal with this," you know? So, this is a new, this is a new avenue. So, we have to make sure there are learning modules in place that, that families understand what the children are doing technologically as well. So, but we need to make sure that is in the classroom. Even if they're standing in front of an educator, there should be some type of learning module to where they're walk, they're walking by with technology. I had to buy back some of my time. I don't think.
All good. Angela, what should we do to get better at technology?
So, one of the benefits of being an educator that travels, right? Because currently, that's what I do. I work in different states around the United States, primarily in literacy. Is that you get to see what is everybody else in this nation doing?
get to see what is everybody else in this nation doing? And I have been blown away at the technology use in some of the districts happening across the United States. And it's really where I see the most powerful is they operate under the assumption that technology needs to be used to create and not just consume. And so what typically is happening in our schools is kids are consuming. We use devices and we use computers to either do something on it or we use it to look up information. And when I go and I work in schools around the nation, I will see kindergarteners, they're five, using tablets to create their own book reports or to create and show the teacher what they're learning. And they will take a picture and then they type in a caption and then they record their audio, their voice, reading what it is that they just learned. And so we have to start looking at technology as a way to create and demonstrate learning, not just as a way that we consume it. Absolutely.
Thank you. And I'm going to get in trouble because everyone's going over time, so.
I didn't go over, I got some of my time back.
I know, that was my phone acting up. But I'm going to start with Angela with the next question, staff recruitment. Now Governor DeSantis did sign into a law that establishes that $47,000 base pay for teachers. Not all teachers liked it, especially the long-running teachers. Okay, that's the law, but what can the district do? What is within the district's power to do to attract and retain good teachers, starting with Angela?
So this has been a problem since the beginning of time in education. And, and I think we keep talking about it in broad brushstrokes, right? And we say, we need to go out and recruit and we need to do, like there's some pot of amazing teachers that's just sitting, waiting for somebody to come do that. That does not exist. So short of offering people more money, we have to give them something to believe in and buy into. And what I mean by that specifically is they have to believe in what we're doing and what we're trying to do and actually see evidence that it's... Sorry about that. Actually see evidence that it's working, right? Because all teachers, all teachers that I know and that I've ever worked with, everybody's working hard. Everybody is working hard. But when you year after year after year do not see progress with students and that you feel like what people are saying is it's your fault, it is tough to, it is tough to survive in that environment. So we really have to rethink, and I'm thinking about some of our schools in District Five, we need to radically rethink what's happening there because what we've done for two decades has not worked.
It's not working.
And you can't, you can't keep working in a spot that you recognize this isn't working.
Yeah. Jeffrey, what are your thoughts on attracting and retaining good teachers?
Well, I, I think number one, investment has to be at the forefront of attracting, that we invest so much into our educators that they want to be in Hillsborough County, not only financially, but also with the extra skills that they need in order, professional skills in order for them to be successful. I think not only that, we have to be very aggressive and intentional about track, attracting other educators to our district, to place in front of our students, those who understand them. We talked about disabilities earlier. We need to make sure that those educators understand disabilities. Just because you have a teaching certificate doesn't mean that you are, that you are divinely developed to teach that particular student. And I know that may go with some, but there are some that have passion or skills for other things. And so we need to make sure that we are placing in front of our students, those that look like them, those that understand their background, those that understand their plight, and those who are concerned not only about them for that particular school year, but what's going to happen even beyond that. So I think that is very important. So there has to be a reason why we have to share vision with them. We have to share passion with them. Why do I want to be in Hillsborough County schools? And that starts from the top all the way down to the bottom. We have to show them why it's great to be here, what resources we have and what professional development we will give to them while they're working with us. It's beyond money because the love is there. So they want more than just money. The money is great, but they want to make sure that they're invested into as being educators as well.
Thank you. Lynn, how do we attract and retain good teachers?
Well, I mean, from the out of town, for example, and we've tackled this, Dr. Whelan and myself in Pasco County, seeing what their best practices are. And for an example, affordable housing, having Suncoast Credit Union have lowest, lower interest rates for those incoming teachers so they can afford housing. And by the way, that's a, it's a remarkably difficult barrier for many teachers to afford actually where they live. Secondly, in the recruitment stage, we do have, right now at Blake, and we used to have it at a few more schools, Future Teachers of America, but actually there is a curriculum that prepares the seniors and they get credit for taking courses related to becoming a teacher. And the partnership, of course, eventually is with USF and University of Tampa to continue. That has to be worked on much more. And following this COVID, that's, you know, one of the recruitment, one of the things on my list to, to make sure it's done. Last, Kelly Services, you know, that's a, a human resource where we actually have viable future teachers. Some of them have bachelors, some of them have masters, but they don't have the certification. So, you know, the idea of fast-tracking that, those humans are those humans, those human resources, I would say is, is a great way of gaining more teachers for the future.
Okay, and Sally, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, first of all, we all know that teachers do not become teachers because of the pay. That is a given. So I think what our governor did on his behalf was fabulous first step in, in giving teachers, especially first-time teachers, a higher pay rate. However, they do come into it with their eyes wide open and they come into it with a passion. And what happens, once they get into it with that passion, sometimes that they fall into the pattern of not being able to teach. So my first and utmost point would be, let's let teachers teach. Let's give them the freedom. They are great, teachers are great, they're creative, they know how to, to pull the children in, they know how to teach all the different levels, all at the same time, meeting the kids where they are. Let's allow them the freedom to teach. Let's, by allowing them to teach, we will see the scores going up, we'll see the learning environment changing. But we put them in the last few years into a stifled curriculum where they couldn't move and teachers were not able to be as creative. The other thing is that we, teachers want to be appreciated, they want to be honored. And this COVID has taught our families and our communities to recognize our teachers are superior. They teach those children every day and they, they, I think the parents realize that. So when they come back to school, let's keep the teachers on that pedestal. Let's keep the momentum going to honor and appreciate those teachers for what they do.
Okay, thank you. And Lynn, this is something, I'm going to start with you on the next one, and you have a lot of experience with this, as, as does everybody on this panel, equity. What more could we be doing in the district to close the achievement gaps, to, to, to have better educational equity?
So, I mean, in, in that particular noun, I mean, that's the word that you have to start out with. What, what are we doing in every instructional sense and in every school-wide initiative? So equity is found when all, all characteristics or all expectations are equal in every school. So an example would be, let's just go with the Hillsborough Healthy Schools where the academic, the social, the emotional, and the school safety by Florida statute, we have measures that have to be put into every elementary school, every middle school and every high school have a certain Florida statute guidelines. And with the Department of Health, we expect that to be done. So right now, the Superintendent Davis and myself, to build equity in every school as a fair, accomplishing school in those domains, we're going to have, right now we have 158 schools involved in filling the survey. We're going to go and have every school. So there is equity mentally, physically, academically, and school safety. So that's, that's, that's critical. And then, and real swift here, when we talk about equity, we want to make sure that our demographics are being represented in our curriculum. So when I say African-American studies, when I say I meet with the Hispanic 70,000 families in, in Wayamama alone, we represent them through our staff and through our migrant leader, they're, they too, I mean, a lot of those kids are gifted. And who has filters to find out if they're even gifted? So we have a lot of work to do with equity.
Thank you. Sally, how do we achieve better equity, close some of these achievement gaps?
First of all, we have to understand where the child's coming from. We have to meet the whole child and meet their needs. We have to understand they need food, we have to understand they might need glasses. We have to understand that some of those children are coming from a poverty environment and they might need a little bit of extra help. My experience with my 30 foster children, that they came to me with a lack of academic support. So sometimes these students come and they don't have that support at home with the academic learning that other children have. We have to be able to make sure that we don't forget that our job is to create an environment where we are actually taking a child from birth to career and that we not forget where they're coming from. We can do many programs, open up many opportunities, but the main thing is understand where they're coming from, meet them where their needs are, and then bring in the resources that we need to make it happen.
Okay, thank you. Jeffrey, how can we close some of these achievement gaps and give, give an equitable education to our children?
Thank you, great question. I think we have to start with this fact. Every school, no matter what district you're in, has the same resources, right? Every school has the same resources, whether you're in District One or District Five or District Four, every school has the same resources. Now, not only that, equity deals with what is fair and impartial, making sure that you're not discriminating against anyone, that all rights and responsibilities and resources are given to them. That is the equality part of that, that marries with the equity piece. Now, I think this is very important to understand, that the champion and those that are talking about equity should not be talking about equity just because you're running. This is something that you do beyond the classroom. You're developing resources and models that's available for families to succeed. If a mother is struggling, it's hard for her to help her child during the daytime or even at night because she's working two or three jobs. So the school has to, has to marry a relationship with our community partners and with our business partners to make sure that every resource that is, is available in the school, not only for the child to succeed, but also for that family. Enough of excluding the family from out of this process. I really believe it takes a village to raise a child. So we're going to talk about equity. It goes beyond that time when the bell rings and what happens in the afternoon. We have to make sure there's a full resource of, a, a system of resources available for that child to prosper.
Thank you. Angela, what can we be doing to close achievement gaps and bring more equity to the schools?
So let me start with a belief, right? Because I, I definitely believe that when you have a belief system, it guides your action. So let me start with that. Anytime an operating system consistently fails a specific set of people, there is not anything wrong with the people, there is something wrong with the system. So whether it's the institution, whether it's the curriculum, whether it's the discipline policies. So we have an equity issue in many layers. There's the curriculum and instruction equity issues, where our students with disabilities, where our black students, where our brown students, where our students of color are not performing at the same rate. And so because I believe they are fully capable, there's nothing wrong with them, there's something wrong with what we're asking them to do and how we're teaching them. We also lead the state in the school to prison pipeline, right? We lead it. So clearly, there is something wrong with the policies, whether it's discipline, whether it's dress code, there is something that is causing those numbers to not look the same. And so, I mean, to get very specific, I would say one thing I think we need to look into specifically is culturally responsive teaching. And it's not just a tagline, like it is literally the idea that we are going to look at hiring, curriculum, and pedagogy through the lens of anti-bias and anti-racism. And looking at everything that we do, talking about identity, asking kids to think critically about what it is that's happening and recognizing, just like Dr. Johnson said, recognizing the brilliance that they and their families bring into the schools. And we've never done it, we've never done that.
Thank you. I, we've touched on a lot of important issues here, but there may be some that we didn't ask you about that you feel should be emphasized. So starting with Lynn, what more should we know about your philosophy and, and what you bring to the school?
So is this my final statement, Marlene?
Pretty much, I'll ask you separately what the website is, but yeah, what should we know about your platform, your...
Well, I mean, I, I will tell you that Monday morning quarterbacking is, is being done, as, as often is with candidates. And I am actually one who has not only been instrumental, but I have implemented programs that are as follows. For example, Hillsborough Healthy Schools, trauma-based teaching, the PBIS, all through the high need schools, that's Positive Behavior Incentive Support System, I have implemented and am working at the African-American Studies, the Hispanic Studies for Diversity. I am now in very deep talks with the Mayor Rick Lott and Superintendent Addison Davis with Ken Atwater with an apprenticeship, a state-of-the-art model HCC combined with HC with our schools in Plant City. I am extremely involved with the communities and any board member who does not have full-time apparatus, time to put into this countywide is simply being unrealistic. This takes me all day, every day, let us alone on the COVID. I easily spent over three hours this morning and will again when I get out of this, this particular forum. So there, there has to be, from candidates' point of view, you have to really have a lot of time and energy and commitment, but you need to have the knowledge of the communities, not just Hispanic, not just African-American, and Hispanic alone has many different communities, not just South Tampa, you have to, and I've lived in those places, I taught in those places, and I have actually built programs to reflect those communities.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Sally, what issues should we know about? What more should we know about you?
Well, I have been the owner of Circle C Ranch Preschool and Summer Camp near MacDill Air Force Base for 40 years. I've raised over 30 foster children and I have four children of my own, all who attended Hillsborough County Public Schools along as myself. And I taught 18 years at Monroe Middle School and two at Tampa Bay Tech. And then while I served on the board, I influenced a $1.2 million energy savings. And I was part of the plan of watching the African-American graduation rate increase by 31%. And the vocational certifications went from 2,500 to 7,000. As chairman, it was my decision to put the referendum tax on the board agenda in a timely, it allowed enough time to be placed on the ballot. I am a passionate about preparing students for life and I will work and get the job done.
Okay, thank you. Jeffrey, what, what other issues would you like to tell us about?
I think anyone, thank you, Marlene, I think anyone that is intelligent can understand the policy, the budget, well as the role and the responsibilities of a school board member. You can learn that, but the only thing you cannot learn is passion. Passion goes beyond what your day job is. You can tout what you've done because you're in position. But I look at what do you do when no cameras are around you and there is no, there is nothing else attached to you? This is what you do because this is who you are. My level of commitment and community service goes beyond just the position that I'm running for. I think that is very important. I currently serve on committees with American Heart Association, with Lutheran Services. I'm a, a be-good ambassador for Beyonce in which we've been honored for our work with kids. Right now, we have a field trip that is in collaboration with Hillsborough County Schools and Pinellas County Schools, that is a district-wide field trip. I wasn't running for office when I did this. I did this because I have passion for our children. I did this because I have children in the school district. So that's very important to understand. One of the biggest things that I want to make sure that is addressed is vocational training. Now I, at nearly $200,000 in debt, paying down student debt, every student may not come out of high school wanting to go into a four-year college. They may not want to go to military. What is it that we're doing? I believe that we're developing children from their cribs to their careers. We're making long-lasting impressions upon our children and this is what we have to do. We have to have to start having conversations beyond the classroom, how do we prepare our children for life? And understand, once again, the passion is not because we're running for office, it has to be what's happening outside of what we're doing when there are no cameras watching.
Angela, final thoughts, final issues that we should know about?
Final issues? I would be remiss if I didn't talk about literacy, right? It comes up again and again. It comes up again and again and again, year after year after year. And so I think the thing that I bring that is, seriously, that is unique, is that that has been my focus. It is what I still do to this day. I still work in classrooms. I still work with districts. I work alongside teachers. I work across this nation to create exemplary literacy experiences, not programs. There is no program that we can buy that is going to save us. It is always going to be, how do we develop the best literacy teachers that we have? And that is what I've spent the past 20 years doing. And coupled right alongside that is that we are now at our 21st cadre in Hillsborough County of coaches, instructional coaches. I was in the very first one. And I bring that up to say, through coaching training, one of the things that you learn is that it is your job to make people comfortable being uncomfortable. You make people comfortable with change, and we are in the middle of the most dramatic change that this county, this nation has ever seen. And so I think I bring that, right, to the board, and I think I bring it to a, and one of my roles when I worked at the school district, the last thing I did, I was a person that supported the entire district. I know what it's like to go from District Five to South County to Plant City to South Tampa. They have individual needs, and it requires somebody that recognizes that and that can quickly develop relationships.
Thank you. And very quickly, I'm gonna go around one more time and ask for your website. Where can we go to learn more about you, starting with Lynn? You're muted.
Oh, did you, you muted me. That's what happened.
No, I didn't.
Oh, then you should hear me. Am I okay now?
Now I hear you. Now I hear you.
Okay, it's www.lindrayforschoolboard.com, and I'm best reached from my phone, 813-453-7885, because I talk to everybody and anytime. So I definitely appreciate everyone's support and goodwill towards the education of our, of all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally, how can we find out more about you?
www.votessallyharris.com, and my phone number is area code 813-817-8429.
Okay, Dr. Johnson, how can we find out more about you?
www.jeffrey, J-E-F-F-E-R-Y, not R-E-Y, E-R-Y, for school board dot com. Every, everything that a person needs to know will be on our website.
Okay, and Dr. Schrodin, I think I misspelled your name too, but go, go for it.
Like, welcome to my world. I thought it's been the bane of my existence since I got married, right? Everybody misspelled, so I made it easy. I did make it easy on everybody. It is simply www.angela.schroden.com, and just like Dr. Johnson said, everything that you need, you can find there in one, one easy spot.
Okay, well, on behalf of the chamber's 1,400 members and its Board of Directors, we want to thank you for joining us today and for your willingness to serve in an elected office. This concludes our Candidates Forum. Good luck. I wish I could vote for...